Hi, good evening. It is six o'clock. I would like to officially call to order our meeting. First, I will do roll call. Councilman Goldsmith.
Here.
Councilman Challenger?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Councilman Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor James, I am here. Would you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We are going to begin with our agenda with Complete Streets. And who is presenting Complete Street?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilman Jenkins. This was a request that I made to put this on the agenda, and we have a presentation from the Complete Streets Smart Growth America. That's online, or at least they're going to present remotely. I'm going to butcher this name. I apologize for that. Anushka Taker from Complete Streets Smart Growth America will make a presentation. And in the agenda packet, there's some read ahead material that I hope folks had a chance just to kind of peruse that. So with that, and I just want to add two things. Hopefully, we can discuss this at a later date, and perhaps we could forward this to the Safety Committee and our traffic consultant, Mead Hunt, to talk about those policies, and perhaps we could look at adopting those in the future. And I would also add that this is really connected to, I believe we're going to have an agenda item next week on the 20th about traffic calming, I believe. So this is connected to that. So I thought this would be a good opportunity to talk, just to get an overview of what Complete Streets is. And with that, then I will yield the floor. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Councilmember. Is it a good time for me to jump in? You cut out for a little bit for me, so just want to make sure.
We can hear you.
Okay, perfect. So thank you again for inviting us to join this session today. I'll just introduce myself, and you did not butcher my name. I am Anushka Taker. I am a program manager for the Thriving Communities team at Smart Growth America. I have a background in transportation planning and public health. So at Smart Growth America, I support a lot of our work under the National Complete Streets Coalition, where we do technical assistance, research reports, and host workshops across the country. I am, I believe, joined by my colleague, Reila Bellis, who is probably in the meeting right now. So I punted to her if she's here to introduce herself. But I don't see her on my screen. So just pausing if she's here.
Hi, everyone. I just joined. Sorry, I was having technical difficulties. My name's Reila Bellis. I'm the Director of Thriving Communities at Smart Growth America. So I run our team that works on complete streets here at SGA, and I work with communities around the country on complete streets. So I'm here to support Anushka and jump in during the Q and A as needed. So nice to meet everyone.
Okay, thanks, Reila. Before I jump in, and I believe I should have control to share my screen, just one logical thing, I will power through the slides and save some time for question and answer at the end of the presentation. But I also encourage everyone to use the chat, as Reila would be keeping an eye on that. So there might be questions that she may be able to answer on the fly. Okay, sharing my screen. Says I cannot share screen. Sorry about this. Reila, do you want to see if on your end you're able to share a screen? Okay, awesome. Something weird happening on my computer then.
Hang on, let me try, Anushka. Let's see.
I think I'm seeing your screen.
Oh, you are? Okay. There we go. How does that work?
Yeah, that looks good to me. Thank you. If you can just move on to the next slide. Okay, so briefly, very briefly, for those of you who may not know us, we are Smart Growth America. We are a national nonprofit that does a lot of work in land use, economic development, and transportation. There are various coalitions that are housed under Smart Growth America that you see listed on top, like Transportation for America, that does a lot of our federal advocacy, National Complete Streets Coalition, that Reila and I are a part of, and we do a lot of work on complete streets. SSDI, which is our research and technical partners at the University of Wisconsin, and others such as Locust and the Form Based Code Institute. And that is our North Star. We envision a country where no matter where you live or who you are, you can enjoy living in a place that is healthy, prosperous, and resilient. Next slide, please. And we do so through these three areas of our work: technical assistance, advocacy, and thought leadership. We work with elected officials at different levels. We work with real estate developers, chambers of commerce, transportation and urban planning professionals, and residents across the board. Next slide, please. Okay, so jumping right in to what do we mean when we say complete streets? Next slide, please. Complete streets are streets for everyone, no matter who they are or how they travel. And if you go on to the next slide, you can see that often when we say complete streets, people think about streets with bike lanes and crosswalks and sidewalks and trees, a street that can be safely shared between people walking, biking, rolling, riding the bus, and even driving. But we say that complete streets is not actually about one single street. It is about actually a full design approach. And next slide, please. It's, complete streets is more than a way to design streets. It is an approach. It is a fundamental shift in making, in how we make decisions about how communities are built to focus on people, not just vehicles, and to balance the needs of everyone using the streets. By, when we say complete streets, we mean that decision makers routinely think about all people who use the streets regardless of age, access, ability, or mode of transportation. Next slide. And again, it is more than, it is beyond just street design. It is about providing access to allow people traveling actively to reach their daily destinations with a priority on the people who need most, who need that the most, particularly vulnerable users and the under-investment communities and underserved communities. I apologize for a little breaking up. Something is really wrong with my computer right now. Okay. And as we shift into a complete streets approach, one thing that is important to remember is that one size doesn't fit all. Once a community commits to making complete streets a part of their everyday work, every project they work on becomes a complete streets project. But there's not one single recipe for what makes a complete streets, because complete streets are context sensitive, meaning that the design is custom tailored to the needs of each and every community. So for example, a complete street in a rural place could look quite different from a complete street in a major city's downtown, but the commonality is that they are both designed to balance the safety and convenience of everyone using the road. Next slide, please. Speaking of safety, which is one of the key elements of complete streets, is to focus on making streets safer for everyone. On the image that you see here, some of the elements that make a street safer are narrow roads, marked crosswalks, protected bike lane, which would make streets safer for people walking, biking, rolling, or taking transit. But often, on the next slide that you will see, that our roads are designed that encourage travel speeds with wide lanes, lack of high-visibility crosswalks, wide intersections that encourage drivers to make turns without slowing. And these types of street design elements that we often see encourage higher speeds, regardless of what speed limits we post on the streets. And the main takeaway here on the next slide is it is impossible to prioritize both speed and safety. Another key element of complete streets is also about providing people access to places through active travel. That means prioritizing bringing destinations close together so people can park once and access their daily needs. They don't have to drive to different destinations to access the various things that they need in their daily lives. But a lot of neighborhoods in the next slide that you will see quite commonly support the kind of development, such as sprawling, as you see in this image here, sprawling neighborhoods and single-use land use and zoning approaches push destinations far apart from each other and make it difficult for people to access destinations easily using different modes of transportation. It is important for us to revisit the utility of streets beyond also just providing access to destinations. A street themselves, if you'll see on the next slide, can themselves be inviting public spaces where people would want to drive to instead of just driving through. Streets don't have to serve a singular purpose of helping cars moving through, and we see, we did this widely happen during the last couple of years of the pandemic. Communities across the country, including big cities, small towns, use their streets as they were responding to the crisis on multiple fronts to set up COVID testing sites, to make space for outdoor activity, to make space for outdoor dining, and so much more. In some cases, we also are now seeing that these temporary installations during COVID-19 are now being made permanent infrastructure. Streets played a vital role during the pandemic, which was a public health crisis. And I'm going to borrow something that I heard recently from someone who said streets and our transportation infrastructure systems are silent influencers for a lot more than just providing access. And so complete streets have a wide range of benefits that we often overlook, which is going to be a part of the next couple of slides that I'm going to talk about. Complete streets have a lot of benefits that impact health indicators, property values, emissions from transportation, and safety. And we recently developed this tool for measuring certain benefits of complete streets projects over a 20-year period. This tool looks at the impacts across these different areas with an equity lens. In the limited time we have today, I won't be diving into the tool, but I will talk through some of these different benefits. But if you're interested to know more about the tool, you should feel free to reach out. Next slide, please. One of the most obvious and important benefits of complete streets is creating opportunities for physical activity. According to the CDC, half of all the adults in the United States are living with a chronic disease, and one in four adults have two or more chronic diseases. Unfortunately, on the contrary, only about half of the adults get physical activity to reduce and prevent chronic diseases. This makes creating streets and communities that support physical activity more important now than ever before. And on the next slide, you'll see one of the initiatives and similar initiatives that are happening across the country to promote walking and more physical activity in general, but designing our streets to create more welcoming and safe built environments that support this shift in lifestyle would be a key element. And there are disparities in these public health impacts. On the next slide, you'll see that this graph shows that the same research from CDC shows that the prevalence of obesity is significantly higher in counties outside of metropolitan areas compared to counties in metropolitan areas. And in rural areas where daily destinations tend to be farther apart, it can be more challenging to access these places on foot or bike and to implement complete streets. But this work is possible and all the work necessary even in rural places. Beyond promoting physical activity, complete streets can lead to other important benefits for community health. As people are choosing these lower emission transportation options instead of driving alone, fewer harmful emissions will be in our air. In addition, as streets are designed to be shared more safely between different users, it would likely reduce the number and severity of crashes and reduce traffic injuries and deaths on our streets, which, as we know, has been a severe issue, especially for pedestrians. This is a graph from our most recent Dangerous by Design report, which shows rising pedestrian fatalities in the United States since 2009. And pedestrian fatalities have been, as you can see, up by a staggering 62% over the last decade. The report also found that over 6,500 people were struck and killed while walking in 2020, which is about a 5% increase from the previous year, when driving was in fact significantly down during the pandemic. And you can see our state rankings for pedestrian deaths on the next slide. And Maryland is amongst the top 20 dangerous states in the country for people walking. And I know Reila, who's been part of this report for a couple of years, and she lives in Maryland, that it has actually shown up on this chart much recently, and it was a much safer state according to the rankings in the previous versions of the report. It is also critical to point out that these pedestrian deaths are not impacting communities equally. We see enormous disparities by race and ethnicity. People of color, especially Black or African American, and American Indian or Alaskan Native people continue to die while walking at higher rates in our communities. And looking at where individuals were at walking at the time of deaths, this graphic shows that people die at a much higher rate in low-income communities compared to higher-income communities. And we all would recognize that low-income communities are significantly less likely to have sidewalks, marked crosswalks, critical safety features, and street design that actually supports safer and slower speeds. And lastly, one other tangent to our Dangerous by Design report. In our last version, we also evaluated whether pedestrian death rates are different between urban and rural communities, because often people think of safety for pedestrians as an urban issue, but people in rural areas also face similar dangers. And when we looked into it, we did find that actually the pedestrian death rates are about the same. Small-town main streets are often straight highways that carry significant regional and truck traffic. And rural roads are often thought about as places that you don't need to keep people walking in mind. They have, they lack sidewalks and safe options to cross the streets, but that does not mean that people in rural areas don't walk. One of the statistics is that 1 million, more than 1 million rural households lack a vehicle. So often, walking is their only option, but they're often overlooked when we design our streets. One last benefit of complete streets that I would like to cover is the economic benefits. On the next slide, we found in a 2015 analysis that projects to support walking and biking reduce crashes and injuries as well as the costs associated with them. These projects also boosted employment levels, property values, and investments from the private sector and net new businesses. Am I frozen? Or, okay, I think we're back. If you can just move past this slide. Okay, so with that whole section, I wanted to shift into how does a community get complete streets? Making complete streets a part of everyday decision-making process instead of treating it as a series of one-off projects usually starts when a community adopts a complete streets policy. On the next slide, complete streets policies help change day-to-day practices, as I said, to make complete streets approach a routine. Making complete streets a part of the decision-making process instead of taking it one by one project-wise helps build a network of communities, a network in our communities, sorry. And on the next slide, this process usually starts with a policy. A policy can help and direct planners and engineers to think about safe access for all users as they plan and design our streets. Along with a policy, communities must also make changes to their current processes for choosing which projects to fund, planning and designing roads, engaging the community, and measuring the success of their projects. And these shifts in processes can actually internally lead to more projects embedded in a whole approach to build a more connected and safe street network. Alternatively, on the next slide, some communities are successful at designing and implementing complete streets to a political champion who acts as a catalyst for change in their communities by holding stakeholders accountable and actively advocating for safer streets in their communities. But if these champions leave their positions or move away, a community can lose a lot of its momentum, which is why we encourage policies and their importance. If you see on the next slide, this map shows the complete streets policy adoption, which started more than two decades ago. And in the last two decades, more than 1,600 complete streets policies have been passed by communities. And a lot of progress has been made, but we still have a long way to go. On the next slide, many of these policies that you see adopted across the country earlier did not focus on equity or implementation, and as a result, did not significantly change the way streets are designed, built, or maintained. That's one of the core reasons why the National Complete Streets Coalition updated its policy framework in 2018. And you will, this was one of the resources that were shared in advance of the presentation, the 10 new policy elements that are on, I think, one of the last slides of this presentation are listed here. They require more, in a sense, require more accountability from jurisdictions in putting policies into practice and ensuring they include provisions that account for the needs of the most vulnerable users. These changes reflect an understanding that policies alone will not result in safer streets unless they're implemented in ways that affect what is built, where it is built, how it is designed, and who benefits from it all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that presentation. I will open it up to council for any questions that you may have, and we're trying to be conscientious about our time to stick on there. So we're already over the 20 minutes allocated. So let's try to keep our questions brief, if any. Any questions from, go ahead, Councilman Challenger?
Yes, thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, for making this a priority for our council to learn about complete streets. I was wondering about, you know, some of the requirements, I guess you said, not really requirements, but connectivity issues. So if you have a more traditional American town, right, with neighborhoods and suburb community that is typically reliant upon transportation and using vehicles to get closer to the big city where they work, how does that compete with the Complete Streets program where you're looking to, it seems to me like, rely less on vehicular traffic and kind of guide it towards a more community-oriented approach? Like, how does that still work when maybe the jobs or the elements of having a destination to walk to aren't exactly there yet?
Anushka, do you want me to jump in?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, good question. I think a lot of that comes down to starting to build a sense of place locally. So even if people are traveling to regional, you know, more regionally for their commutes, starting to try to bring in the types of development that will allow them to, say, walk to the grocery store locally once they're home, walk to restaurants locally once they're home, try to build that sense of place so that even if their work trips aren't necessarily walkable trips, that they can actually meet some of those other daily needs within their community. So there's a big land use piece of that, obviously, and development incentives piece as well.
Okay, thanks. One last question. I saw on the map that you showed us that Maryland was highlighted at least a shade of blue, and then the secondary graphic, there were some dots on there. Can you give us some examples of some Maryland towns or cities that have had successful implementation of complete streets policies that we can look at and say, okay, we see where they started, and we see what progress they've had, and this is a worthwhile endeavor for us to pursue as well?
We will share as a follow-up some examples from our Complete Streets Policy Atlas that you all can look at. But I know we have a program called the Champions Institute where local elected officials apply and participate. So I happen to know that Howard County has been doing a lot of good work on this recently because our champion just had some successful movement around their complete streets work. But we will share some examples with you all that you can look at, and examples also of language in their policies that you can consider if you're interested in adopting a complete streets policy.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, Councilman Jenkins, I just want to say again, thank you for the presentation. And I would only add a comment that I believe the state of Maryland adopted a complete streets policy. I think the Maryland Department of Transportation adopted that a number of years ago. I meant to bring that with me, but I didn't do that. So thank you again for the presentation.
We just got news that from 301 to Willow Street, we have, we were awarded $11.34 million for the next six years. We just found that out. Over the weekend, I found that out and confirmed it today, so that it will be money to help with the streetscape on from Willow, I mean, from 301.
From Charles Street, okay.
Charles Street, so that's exciting news.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's exciting.
Because that creates the sense, what the previous comment was about creating a sense of place.
Right.
So hopefully, folks can then walk.
We're working closely with CGA also, so we can do, so we can do our streetscape on Charles Street, which I find very important.
Very, absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? All right, thank. Is there a hand raise?
Janine Harrington.
Director Harrington, do you have a comment?
I do. I just wanted to let the council know that staff has already drafted a complete streets policy based on not only their work, but as David Jenkins, Councilman Jenkins pointed out, the state of Maryland has policies and guidelines. So we actually have the full draft in place, and we're just trying to do some minor reviews and edits based on our Keep a Platter Beautiful Committee, working with our Director of Public Works and Director of Operations on the actual roads that we have in place. So that has already been drafted, and we will be bringing that forward hopefully sooner rather than later.
Well, it seems like the timing is right on everything. So maybe we will, once and for all, get Charles Street to a place that is walkable and has a sense of place on that. So thank you very much. All right, moving on to 2.2 Employee Benefits. Mr. Manuel?
Ooh.
I gave you.
Moving along, I tell you.
You have extra eight minutes, so come on now.
All right. As council's aware, Lieutenant Norris has put together a presentation that he actually made available to you in advance of the meeting to try to answer any questions that you may have had prior to the meeting. What we are looking for tonight, of course, during the budget process for the FY 2023 budget, the sort of a pension system came up as it had in the previous years, more specifically, LEOPS. I think during the discussions, it was one of the recommendations offered by a town treasurer was to go out and work with a third-party consultant through an RFP process to evaluate and come back with recommendations to council based on the study that they would do. So we were looking for the consensus of council to move forward with that process and getting the RFP out there to parties, and we have been in contact with some to make them aware that we are interested in the work. So that is where we currently are.
I was very happy to see the data that Lieutenant Norris provided. It was great to see that LEOPS was not the prevalent plan in place for the surrounding area. So I was happy to see that, and I was happy to see that we were not, you know, amongst the lowest on the totem pole to have salary and benefits. We were very, pretty much close to what everybody else has. But I am. But I am happy to make the motion that we move forward with getting this RFP done. It's long overdue.
So I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Discussion. I do have a comment. I just, I love how it has been encompassing all of the employees. We value our employees from our, you know, our, every department we value. So this is good that it's not just one department that is, I guess, kind of out for themselves. You did a lot of work, and thank you for that. It has been long overdue for, for that. Being a military spouse, when I came in, in 2017, I said, this is something we need to look at. Well, sometimes it takes someone else to poke the bear a little bit harder to get it done. So thank you so much for that. I appreciate that. Any other comments? Yes.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, I will also echo what Councilwoman Brian Ward, and thank you for the documentation. That is very important. I, I was curious, question. And maybe, maybe it's for another question for future, but what is the cost to go from a pay table to a pay scale? I mean, what would that cost the town? We, we have, I guess, to understand what that cost would be.
It depends on what kind of folks you have in finance that are trained. I mean, all this is a formula. Your base is just creating it. It all depends on what the, the town council wants as far as.
It just depends on what the town council wants as far as how many steps. And I think maybe moving forward, pay and benefit study as far as retirement, that would kind of dictate how many steps you would probably have incorporated into it. I don't think it would cost much money to elaborate on that, honestly. I think it's, it's probably built into a lot of the pay point HR research that was given to us months ago. And I kind of just piggybacked off of the comparatives that they gave me and extras that they said we should have used that didn't get back to them that I had success talking to. So as far as a cost, I don't think there's much of a cost with that, honestly. It's just translating from one manner of, you know, having your time service per salary to another.
Any other questions or discussions? Jim has his hands up. A Councilman Goldsmith. Sorry, it was a wave over there. I didn't see the wave over the wave.
I know a lot of work is going into this. It's a good start. One thing I did see missing from it, and I hope if we go through the contract aspect more depth, and that is the cost to get into another program such as the Leops. That was one fact that we were very concerned about. So as the study is done, they'll probably have more access to data to include that as well. But again, thank you very much for the study, and I know the work that you had to put into it. And I support the idea of developing a contractor.
Fantastic. I think we're supposed to do a consensus, but if we rolled down. So we'll go motion consensus. So another comment?
Yeah, so I did. So in talking with Mr. Greenville earlier, he showed me some analysis of what it would cost. And it was not very, you know, costly from the, from the perspective of the not Leops, but the other plans and studies. So I, I don't think that it would be a, a big outlay of cash to get people moved over. And I think the data that he shared with me was based upon what we had in existence already.
Right.
Just one comment. I, I appreciate not only the presentation, but the thoroughness. I just want to echo what Commissioner, excuse me, Councilwoman Brian Ward said. Just to have the data, I mean, even in a simple Excel format with columns, right? And to see sworn officers for each department, I mean, this, this was thoroughly researched. I mean, this was, this is helpful. We can finally kind of see the numbers in a way that we can digest over time. So I appreciate that. I think council, and I can't speak for prior council, but I think we've all had a, a listening ear. And this is an opportunity where a rising tide lifts all boats, and I think that's a win-win. So I think council, we've, we've all wanted to move this forward in the right way, and this is a great opportunity. So just for myself, I appreciate the opportunity for us to move forward. So thank you.
And, and as I said before, I love that it's inclusive of everyone and not just exclusive. So even though it's not really supposed to be a motion, I've got one on the floor, and I've got a second. And all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Just so we cover all bases. We do have a consensus, right? So whatever you put there, it's on there. So thank you very much. And we will direct, Mr. Manuel, is being directed to have an RFP out so that we can move this forward. Keep it, keep it going.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, and thank you all for showing up. I appreciate that.
And. Pat yourself on the back.
Yes.
Hold on.
Appreciate it. And if anybody has any questions in the meantime, that's a majority of my research and what I could put out. I'm sure I have plenty more up in my head that I could get to y'all if, if, if asked. But if you need anything further delved into on that, or HR contacts, I'm available anytime, so.
Mr. Manuel, when can we get the RFP out? And how long, what of a deadline are we going to do? Because I certainly want this done within my tenure.
Oh, yeah, obviously. Yeah, we had met last week, I think, and that was one of the things. We want to sort of put together a project timeline, first task being the RFP, which I would hope we could turn around in thirty days to get it, get it out on the street. And then, you know, probably thirty day, thirty to, probably something like this, thirty days to turn around from the private sector to respond to our RFP. And then there would be an evaluation process of the RFPs that would take place, probably with a staff recommendation back to the council for consideration.
So it looks like it should be back in our hands by December.
Yeah, we were talking about before the new year, potentially, yes.
All right. Good. I always like action items and concrete dates, so. All right, before December thirty first, twenty twenty-two. All right.
Two?
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. You all stay safe out there. Appreciate it. Yes. Earned kudos there. All right, on to our next item, which is, you know what, come on down. Director Stahl, just join us. MS four engineering and vector jetter truck.
Yes, Mayor Council, as you all are aware, we are moving forward with our MS four compliance, which will be due by twenty twenty-five. We do have four ponds that we will be renovating to the two thousand seven standard, which the four ponds are out at Redwood Lake, the two in AgroCopia. And then the fourth one is in Quailwood. It's the one down in the bottom at Quailwood. And so what we did, we went out to four different engineering firms. We tried to also contact the locals as well. So we were in contact with Ben Dyer and Associates and also with LDG Lorenzi Dodson Gannell. And Lorenzi Dodson Gannell and Ben Dyer both declined, said they did not have the manpower to be able to handle that job. But we did receive bids back from Soltez and from Coastal Resources. In this case, the winning bid was Coastal Resources to do the pond design. They also happen to be the same firm that's doing the design work for Tillman Lake. And so I just came before you tonight to, we did work, because this is funded through ARPA. I have talked to Tom Himmler. He feels good about the procurement, even though we, he would like to have had three bids, but we do have denials from the other two that just were not able to bid. So I'd like to recommend that we move forward and let the town manager sign the contract to procure the engineering for the MS four design on this.
Thank you, and I see that it is legislation below should council agree to move forward on this, so.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that one first.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Thank you. Well, Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four, thank you for doing this, and I, and I'm glad you documented that it is part of the ARPA plan and the budget, I think it was Project ID zero seven. But I had a question. I noticed in, in Coastal Resources' proposal, they did include wetlands delineation, whereas Soltez did. So is that needed or not?
We're hopeful that it isn't. We are, it, it could potentially be, but we didn't feel that the pricing differential met the criteria for that, that if we did have to delineate because of the significant pricing differential.
Yes, there's a big difference.
There's a big difference in price, that we could still do the delineation within that framework as a subcontract to a, to another firm, another firm or to, to Coastal, if that became necessary.
And I'm assuming, or we're assuming then that there would be ARPA funding available to, to cover that extra.
Absolutely. The ARPA funding, the two million dollars that we have set aside was both for design and construction, and we believe
Okay.
that we should be able to fit that into the budget.
So.
See that as a problem.
And then one final question. Wanted this, so this is for the design of these four bays, or four ponds? So it'll be another estimate for the actual construction?
We will put that, once we have the design, it will be a design bid construct. So we will actually take that design, and that will become the boilerplate for the procurement for the construction in this situation. So that will actually become a public bid at that point. And just.
So we'll know the cost of what that could be, or there'll be an estimate for this project.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
That's the next step. Okay.
And the, the, the big thing is, is that when we're putting it out, they will do the, the plans and specifications.
Okay.
So that becomes the base for our actual public bid. So I think that's kind of the way our intention was to do this.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to?
You want to consent? He also has the vector.
So consensus to move on, so this, moving on to legislation for, in just a bit, consensus? It's been a long day.
Yes, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Good, we'll talk about this in two minutes on a down legislation. Hot mess today. All right, and then you're, you're, you're still sticking around, huh? For your, for your jetter?
Yes. Madam Mayor, Council, we, as you know, our jetter truck that we currently have is fairly old. It is over twenty years old. And although we plan to retain it in the fleet, we have always been looking to get a vector jetter truck that is a combination of both what we currently have into one vehicle. We did budget seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the ARPA budget for this. These trucks aren't cheap by any stretch of the imagination, and they're, they're a large ten-wheel vehicle, so they are something that we anticipated to be expensive. As you can see from the proposal of the five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, we actually had a previous proposal. And when they came down to do the demonstration for us, we did add some additional items that we felt were important for our use and things that would be important for us here in the town of La Plata. So we went back and had it rebid by GapVax. This procurement is through Sourcewell, so Sourcewell, which is the National Joint Purchasing Alliance, where they actually go out and do the bidding for you. So we came back, they have a contract with Sourcewell, and so this is Sourcewell pricing. Again, we're using ARPA funding for this, and Mr. Himmler was agreeable that this was, he did check the contract and was agreeable that this was a good means of procuring this truck. The reason that we went with GapVax was because the company that cleans out the Willow Lane Treatment Plant, I mean, excuse me, the Willow Lane Pump Station for us every year, Klein's Services, which is up in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, they have always highly recommended GapVax, and we've always been impressed with their equipment and the maintenance of their equipment. And so we did go and look at GapVax, and we're impressed with the GapVax vehicle. And so that's why we have ultimately selected GapVax as our vendor for this. It is a Peterbilt chassis, which is a Packard chassis. Same as, very similar to a lot of the trucks that we have. Packard owns both Kenworth and Peterbilt. And so we're trying to do, because it does standardize a lot of items for repair on, on vehicle. And so we felt very good about this. It is a Peterbilt chassis. And if we contract and order this truck and issue a purchase order, there is a one-year wait for the truck. Now, if you'll notice on that, they did add the language in there that there would be no additional markups from that. So they're going to guarantee that price, which is for the one-year period until we receive the truck.
And that was the hangup last time we came before council on this piece of equipment?
It, it's a challenge, and this is trying to lock people in on this price. You give them a purchase order, and to be honest, in the past two years, it's been worth about what the paper's worth that it's written on.
Yeah.
In this situation, they have guaranteed us that there would not be any surcharges for you for, that would be applied for the truck over the one-year period.
Bobby, it says, quote, "good for forty-five days." No surcharge will be added to final invoice on that.
Correct.
So the quote meaning that if we.
Contract for it, then we would contract with it through a purchase order.
So then they will guarantee it for one year?
Correct.
Okay.
We wouldn't receive the truck theoretically until next September. They would like to get it to us before, but they're estimating a one-year time.
And that's one of the reasons it's on the agenda later as action is because we're finding under current environments that we need to move these things forward, although we can't wait two weeks until a business meeting, especially on a lot of the purchases. And additionally, we talked with our consultant, who Bobby referred to, Thomas Himmler, who's with Thomas Michaels, the firm, and any project that comes before you will have cleared that consultant as far as the procurement before it gets to you. But we've talked about moving a lot of the purchases forward in our ARPA budget for the sole purpose of we didn't want to get to the end of those monies and be caught because of supply chain issues. So we are going to be working to amend that budget to try to move some of, because we have the money on hand. It's not a, a matter of waiting. We have the second tranche now. So we're in good shape as far as that goes, so we see no reason to, to hold back. And so it'll be further discussions with the amendment of the ARPA budget in the near future.
And, you know, one thing that I see that it is a need, not a want. So that's the first thing. We need that. And second of all, we've already approved it through the ARPA funding. It was allocated through that. So this is one of the ones that, should we get our way with the consent agenda items? This would be under a consent agenda and wouldn't require all of the discussion on that. But since we are here now, do, I will open the floor. Does council have any questions?
Yes, Councilman Matt Challenger, Ward two. Director Stahl, thank you for your presentation and for ensuring, you know, we've got some price confirmation here for an extended period of time, hopefully. Just for the benefit of any residents that are on the call in a minute or less, this back truck jet slash jetter allows the town to do what that's helpful for the residents?
This, well.
Because it's a big, hang on, five fifty-nine.
It certainly is. The jetter is a high-powered and high-pressure water system that we use for unclogging sewer lines. So when you see the truck go out, where you see it with a one-inch orange hose on the back, we are using high-pressure water in the town, around two to three thousand PSI water that you goes into the sewer line and ends up breaking up the clog and unclogging it. This truck has a front-mounted jetter on it and has the water onboard with it. The second part of this truck is the vector. Currently, you've seen us. Currently, you've seen us utilize our vacuum trailer. We have a trailer with a, and so we have a small one. And, um, we are using that more and more, and we use it for two things. One is when we have grease clogs and things in the manhole, we need to be able to suck that out of the manhole, and that's what we use this for in that situation, is to be able to remove any of the solids that we need to pull out of a clog. The second part is, it's also good for hydraulic excavation. So you can actually combine the Jetter part of it with the Vector part, and we find and locate utilities. So instead of going in there and digging down with a backhoe and hitting possible utilities, when this utility comes out and locates for us, we then go and find the utilities first with that vacuum system. We actually use the Jetter to blow the dirt out, and we use the vacuum system to suck the dirt out of the hole. So it is something that's very effective. We use probably, uh, the, the hydraulic excavation more than we actually use it for cleaning out manholes, cleaning out, um, uh, stormwater.
So it sounds like this will allow us to be more efficient and potentially less multiple trips by multiple people, right? Because you're able to do it all at once.
Absolutely.
So you're going to be able to cut down on man-hours, you're going to be more efficient with the vehicles. So all in all, this could save the town and, and your staff.
We're replacing, or not replacing, but we're adding a much newer vehicle for vehicles that are actually 20 years old.
Thank you.
Great. So do I have a consensus to move this down to legislation for today?
I'm okay. Move forward.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we'll see it in just a couple of minutes. Thank you, Director Stahl. Appreciate it.
So who will we see the votes for the trash trucks?
We're working on that through Sourcewell right now. We have given them our specifications. We have put them out to Sourcewell. They have been in touch with vendors, and we actually have Tom's truck working with Sourcewell as well. So we know that the current vendor that we had used will actually be part of that bid. We just haven't received them back yet, and it may take several more weeks. We're working as diligently as we can, trying to get that through, but we wanted to go through Sourcewell to use, uh, Sourcewell pricing in that situation.
How much your current truck cost the, what is it, Jetter, that, that Jetter? How much the 20-year-old one costs?
Oh goodness. Um, it actually predates me, so I really, um, don't know. It's a much smaller vehicle. It's actually a six-wheel, uh, truck. Um, I, I want to say off the top of my head, it's a 1995. So it's considerably older. It, but typical of all of our trucks, it doesn't have a lot of hours on it. It's just, it sits a lot. Um, if I'm not mistaken, it has in the 20-some thousand mile range.
It's back in the thousand hours.
The, the, the problem is that the Jetter portion has a lot of hours because it'll sit out there. And so the, the actual Jetter has been rebuilt several times since I've been here. And so we have to replace the hose, those kind of things. This is a much more effective unit, much more complex, and we're hopeful to assign one driver to this vehicle because we, we want to have it so that it's, um, very well taken care of because it is an expensive vehicle.
And I would assume it's not a take-home vehicle. Sorry. It's just there. Thank you. All right. Our Assistant Town Manager, Shaw Mine, come on down, talking about our HR executive search.
Yes, Mayor and Council, thank you. Upon your direction, um, the Town Manager and I interviewed three different firms, and if you have any questions from the memo that I put out about that.
Thank you for that. Um, I love that there were three, and they're all qualified. Uh, and I also like how you went middle of the road. It wasn't the highest, it wasn't the lowest, it was right in the middle of the road. And, um, I say, let's get this moving. Do we have any questions, uh, on this?
Yeah, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four. Uh, isn't Baker Telly the firm that was used to do some analysis of our, um?
They did our major facility.
They did major facility, the analysis.
It's a different section of the firm, yes.
So that assumes they have some familiarity with La Plata then, which is good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
It would be a different project team, but.
All right. Um, do I have, uh, a consensus to move this forward for, do we need, oh, legislation?
We do have a resolution down.
To move it forward to legislation?
That's for process, so that we get the process moving, uh, in a timely manner as opposed to waiting two weeks.
Okay.
Consensus? Yes, shaking heads?
I'm okay with that.
All right. And I like that there is a time, kind of a concrete time zone, uh, time limit to say it's four to six months to complete this entire process. So hopefully it's more leaning towards the four than the six, but we want to thorough.
It was 90 to 120 is the range.
90 to 120, and in anticipation of tonight's meeting, we have already started gathering the data that they.
Excellent.
Just in case you guys.
Yeah. Fantastic. All right. The consensus to move it forward. Stay tuned for legislation and see what really happens. All right. Cornerstone Government Affairs. Mr. Manuel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, this is an extension to our existing engagement with Cornerstone Government Affairs. Of course, the term would be for one year. The cost is not to exceed $78,000. Uh, and the scope is, is within their letter of engagement. Items that we are engaged with them currently, uh, include, uh, water appropriation, uh, Maryland Department of Health surplus property, assistance in the interconnection, uh, with St., St. Charles, excuse me, uh, working on sidewalks on Washington Avenue, future bond bill initiatives that the council may have. They were instrumental in the bond, uh, bill issuance for the Dorchester Community Center last, uh, legislative session. Continued work on Route Six. I think they had a lot to do with the 11.34.
394.
394 million that the mayor, um, talked about and working through state highway. And I think it's a result of the study through RKNK that we've discussed and are still waiting to hear back about the results. And also in the, uh, besides the bond bill, the, uh, future development of the Dorchester Community Center. So those are, uh, the specific items that we are engaged with them, uh, to provide legislative or, uh, assistance with. And I have, answer any questions you may have.
They did not, uh, request, uh, increase in, uh.
Yeah, and it's budgeted.
So, Councilman Brian, Ward, Ward three. We never hear anything about these conversations or activities.
Yeah, I include updates in the weekly report from time to time.
Time to time. And that, when did they participate in the conversation for the DCC? You wrote the letter. When, what did they have to do with that?
Uh, they had a lot of conversations with delegates, uh, regarding moving that, um, that project forward.
And if I can take, uh, if I can answer that too, they actually, uh, delegate C.T. Wilson reached out to, uh, Matt Middleton and said, "We need you to submit something again," because it was, um, it did not move forward from when, uh, Mr. Manuel went and, um, spoke to the delegation up in Waldorf. Uh, they then had an allocation of money, and, um, because of, uh, C.T. Wilson, it sits on that committee, he reached out to CGA and, um, immediately, uh, it, that's how it was secured on that.
That's not how I understood it. I, I did have a conversation, and it was, the way I understood it is that C.T. had money, whereas the delegates did not, and he was willing, and from a different fund, and he was willing to, um, move it forward that way.
Yeah, yeah. He definitely reached out to CGA on that.
Do we have documentation for that? Because I didn't, I talked, I didn't hear that. And so, I mean, I think it would be really, you know, we're, if we're, you know, going to continue to engage a firm and it's, you know, part of our responsibility to approve it, I would like to know what they do for us. And I think I've asked that before, and I, I have seen on occasions, but you just rattled off a ton of things that they've been engaged in. We did know that we got the 11.34 for the streetscapes or whatever it's called.
Route Six.
And so you're saying that they did that, um, but.
No, I didn't say they did that. I said they probably had a part to play.
The mayor, yeah, but when I got, when we heard about the funding, um, it was because you had nagged and nagged and gone forward. So that didn't say anything about Cornerstone. So I would just appreciate knowing what they're doing for us and what we're paying for, because it's not a small amount in my mind.
No, it's not. Uh, we can provide more regular updates.
Again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward four, I would echo the same concern that I, I would, we would appreciate some kind of a update of what they're doing, because I, we, I would just echo what you just said. We have no clue per se, and it just would be very helpful to have some summary report or progress report or something update from them will be very helpful. Thank you.
That is not an unreasonable request at all.
Chiming in, I'm involved in some lobbying organizations professionally, and I'll say, we're and that, you know, just as a member of these organizations, we regularly receive reports, we get meetings in person as the legislative agendas, plans, success, how we can help. Um, I was, look, I'm, I'm glad somebody's working on our behalf, but without knowing what those elements are, is a tremendous amount of money that we're responsible for to our, our town. I'm not comfortable without knowing what the plan is and having regular engagement. Not that we're telling them exactly what to do, but we're, we're a team as a unit. We need to engage them with what our goals are and how we can support them and how they can support us, because this is a lot of money that, that we're, we're paying them. And, um, I don't know, I've, like, I mean, you know, the other, the organizations that I've been involved with, we've had an active role, and it's a lot more members than what we have here. And we've had, again, meetings in Annapolis to talk about the legislative agenda and what the plans are and success rate that, you know, I don't like to hear about it third-hand. Um, so I look forward to maybe re-establishing our relationship on a better front.
And they do meet, um, with, uh, the town every other week for, uh, to engage, and, uh, I am part of that conversation as well. And, uh, they have been instrumental in moving, moving the ball, uh, on many of the projects, but I can understand the concern of not having any report, and that is something that.
Including in the meeting, if we want fits, then I think that we should also be at least, uh, an opportunity to say we can't attend or won't attend. But if you're hearing it, I would like to hear it firsthand as opposed to, um, just getting bits and pieces of the conversation.
And this is really going to be important because we're going to have a whole new administration come January. So this is really critical that, uh, w- we get our ducks lined up with us and with them going into the new governor and the new session.
Okay, so with that, uh, I hear your concerns. Um, do we want, do we have a consensus to extend their, um, contract that expires this month?
16th, I believe.
So in a couple of days. Um, I guess with the contingency that they have reports, they're in the middle of.
It's a letter of engagement. Oh. No, I've got it for your review. I can email the council. Not going to do you any good, right? No, but I can make it available to council. I can email it out to you.
Okay, we have 16th in.
Today is the 13th, so we would not be able to take action unless we had an emergency meeting to, um, to have. Jim, did you have something to say? No. Okay. So unless. Um, unless we have an emergency meeting before the 16th, their, um, contract expires.
I understand why you brought to us, you know, three, four days before, and we're expected to make decisions. We haven't seen.
Yeah, honestly.
We have a problem with that.
We, did we see this six, we saw this last year. It's the, just an extension.
It's an extension of the existing. Uh, I think there may be some elements that are included, which one would be, I know, in the assisting in the development and operation plan for DCC.
That was included, but it's.
It's new to this agr- arrangement. So there are, that's the one element, uh.
That they've been, uh, updated, but have not taken away anything.
Right.
On that.
Yeah. I, I'm not comfortable going forward with this today, I mean, having not seen the new services agreement. And, and you could say, we've done this last year, but the concerns are arising from the lack of involvement from the past year, right? So, um, emergency meeting or not, uh, three days ahead for a $78,000 commitment, we haven't had any engagement. You know, we didn't, I mean, is there, um, Mr. Manuel, is there a new approach, um, perhaps that we can discuss with them about engaging us as an entire body and, and maybe, having some legislative priority sessions with the whole group, that we can kind of do this simultaneously as we review this new agreement?
Yeah, I think that's, well, very reasonable, and we could request that they provide a written, you know, bi-weekly update to the entire council. Uh, I don't think that's unreasonable at all.
So I will ask, so it's on the record, um, if, uh, we are comfortable moving it on to legislative today. I'm looking for consensus, uh, Councilwoman, I'll go just around the corner, Council, uh, around the table, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins?
No.
Councilman Goldsmith?
I have no objections.
Okay, Councilman Challenger?
No, not at this time.
And I definitely have no objections, knowing what's going on, but I understand your concern. So, with that, I don't want them to go if we continue them.
Yes, I.
I don't want them to drop what they're right in the middle of, which is water appropriation and Box Elder. Those are the two hot items, uh, on there. So, um, Mr. Manuel, what is the next?
I say, I can reach out to them and see if they would amend the contract to include language that would indicate a bi-weekly report to the entire council. And, uh, there may be a lapse if we do not vote the 17th, but we could come back next week for council's consideration.
16th, Friday the 16th, because 17th is Saturday.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If there's, I don't know that there's that big of a deal if there's a lapse in their, in their engagement of a few days, we could bring it back next Tuesday.
All right. Moving on, additional holidays.
Um, that is me again. Um, the memo is pretty self-explanatory. If you have any questions, it's just, um, it's mirroring what the county is doing.
Um, I'm going to open up the floor, and then I do have several questions. Does anybody have any questions?
So these are really, Councilman Jackson, Ward four, these are holidays on the, on the day, on the eve of Christmas and New Year's, right? I mean, there's a, because they fall on a.
These are basically extension or additional days that the county has chosen to give off, which are outside your typical holiday uh, calendar. And the, I guess what necessitates us making, trying to make a decision, if it's the will of the council, is that we have a newsletter that's going out, and, and the event that you, the council would choose to add additional days, we would like to get an article within the newsletter to, uh, make the, the community aware as well as give operations time to maybe amend their trash pickup, uh, recycling schedule.
So they, but these holidays are like, it's on the, on the, it's the day before Thanksgiving, it's the day before Christmas Eve, and the day before New Year's Eve, right?
Those are the three days that the county added to their schedule, yes.
And so we don't really know what this, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, I, I guess I'm just, but we don't, we don't know what this will cost us to do that, right?
No, like I said, um, at the absence of the treasurer, I use verbiage from last year for the two days that were additional holidays that he said there was no financial.
No major financial hardship, I think was the language.
How many holidays do, uh, we already have on the books?
13.
13, and we just added June 10th.
Yes.
So, um, it, one of my questions was. So one of my questions was, why didn't we approach that when we did Juneteenth and we made that into a resolution? Why didn't we add those dates?
Because the House County Commissioners just voted on this as well.
Because they, they did it last year too, just a couple of weeks.
Also, I want to remind you, it's a lame duck governor who may get friendly with providing state, additional state holidays off in advance of the election, which is not untypical.
And, and the federal government does not follow this.
No.
Yeah, I, I'm going to speak and I'm going to speak boldly. I value every employee that is, that works for the town, but I am not in favor of giving off the day before Thanksgiving when we give the day after off. And then the Fridays to Fridays, when we are generous with our others. In fact, we have more holidays than I think the federal government authorizes. So with that, I will make the very unpopular decision of not adding those extra days in. And people can take personal days if they so need that. Councilwoman.
Did you just make a decision for them?
No, I said I am.
Oh, I thought you said I'm going to make the very unpopular decision. Oh, okay, but that sounded like it was final. Misunderstood. Okay, that was fine.
I will speak for myself.
Okay.
And I will have the rest of council weigh in.
I guess my concern is, I mean, I understand, and I would echo the mayor, you know, we value our employees. But, but I have two concerns. One. We don't necessarily have to blindly follow what the commissioners do, I mean, with all due respect. Two, I'm, I'm probably not, I'm just very troubled, again, that, that we don't have any financial information that what this is going to cost us. It may be minimal, but it just, again. It's just part of a larger issue that, you know, we don't have any particular, right now, we have no expertise to tell us what this costs us. And that, and I have a real concern about that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So typically, the day before a holiday is not a day off. And not because I'm making it personal, but because it's just not logical. Typically, you have a holiday celebration before the holiday, people may go home early in the afternoon or something to that effect. But simply because the commissioners did it doesn't make it necessary for us to do it. And if the lame duck governor decides to do it, then we'll deal with that when it crosses, cross that bridge when we get to it and we may or may not get to it. That's not a holiday the day before. The day after, if we're giving that already, I think we continue to give the day after and not add these two.
Councilman Goldsmith, you want to weigh in?
I kind of basically agree with Councilman Ryan Ward. Obviously, the day after Thanksgiving, everybody's kind of expecting that. If you're looking at the Christmas timeframe, it's adding a few more. And something happens with the governor, he does something, or if the federal government does it, if the government does it, then we follow it. But I'd say Friday after Thanksgiving and noted the rest.
Councilman Tullinger.
I don't see any reason for us to change our holiday schedule this time.
All right, so we have a consensus not to move forward with the proposed holiday schedule. All right, thank you, thank you. We go to legislation and boy, in the way, we are one minute ahead of time according to this. Good. All right, Mr. Manuel with Resolution two dash twenty-two.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning MS four stormwater management pond rehabilitation. For the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement for professional services for four stormwater management ponds and all matters related thereto.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-two as written?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve a resolution, MS four stormwater management pond rehab.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, he's delayed, he's still in, I, I was waiting for that. Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three, Public Works jetter truck.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, for your introduction and consideration of adoption. A resolution concerning Public Works Vector Jetter Vehicle Purchase for the Purpose of Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into a Contract Purchase Agreement of a Vector Jetter Truck for Use by Public Works.
Do I have a motion to accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three?
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three, Public Works Vector Jetter Vehicle Purchase for Adoption.
All right, do I have a second?
Second, Madam Mayor.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four, Executive Search Firm Recruitment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, for your, for introduction and consideration of adoption, a resolution concerning Executive Search Firm Director of Human Resources. For the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract agreement with an executive search firm for the recruitment of Director of Human Resources.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four?
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty-two dash twenty-four, Executive Search Firm for Director of Human Resources.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. I, we are going, it brings us to our future work session topics.
All right, future work session topics, we have the Smeco lighting, which I believe is a recommendation that Councilman Goldsmith will be reporting out from the DRB meeting of last month. We have creative crosswalk updates, which will be Ms. Phipps. Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three revision, which was the sort of council procedures. And we have a, as Councilman Jenkins said, the mind mixer, well, no, actually, you were referring to a presentation that I think Chief Schenner is going to do on traffic calming, but Mind Mixer was another item that you had presented for a work session. If you want to take two seconds and two seconds, that may be a little ambitious, but thirty seconds and give us.
Before you go with that, I know with Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three, one of the items on there is that we bring whoever's bringing something to the table for the agenda, any one of the five of us, that we have that brought to council. And I guess we could do it today and see if there is a will of the council to have a presentation of such. And I thought that with Resolution twenty-one twenty-three, we could do that in the first Tuesday of the month, that any of the to-do agenda items brought forth by the council for our approval. I mean, since you threw it out there tonight, Mr. Manuel, we can do that tonight. You can tell us what Mind Mixer is and see if it's something that we want to put on a future agenda or if it's something that is to be emailed to all of us and we can digest it that way. So, Councilwoman Jenkins, if you want to give us a brief description of what Mind Mixer is.
Well, I will just backtrack a little bit. What is Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three revisions? I don't know what that is.
That was a rules of procedure for council and.
Because I, I submitted one comment. Okay, thank you.
And that'll come up next month, or next month, next week.
Mind Mixer is a, a company that does citizen engagement. They create a website and a process for citizen engagement. And I've used them in previous employment and I've seen them use in other communities. I started with an opportunity for them to give a presentation of what they do and the pricing list. Because one of my concerns is a better way to do citizen outreach. It could be a separate program, it doesn't, it's not necessarily tied to our revised website per se, but it's an opportunity. And so in the agenda request that I provided to the town manager and legislative services, there are examples and a pricing list and also a PowerPoint presentation that they provided already. But I can, I've talked to the representative, actually, I found out he's the owner. And he's given me some different dates, so I provided those dates to Mr. Manuel. So again, it's just an opportunity to talk about how we can improve, what I think we should improve our citizen engagement outreach.
Who, who would be the user of the software? For the program?
The town would, would enter into a contract and then.
Right, but who in the town?
All the citizens can have access to it, for instance.
Who in the town, meaning?
I mean, the administration?
Yes.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So this organization, the town staffing, who on the town staff will be utilizing that?
It could be planning, could be town manager, could be legislative services, that, that would have to be determined what, what quote department or agency within the town would manage or administer the system.
I would be interested in receiving information through email to learn a little bit more about it.
I'll do that tonight.
Presentation, to gauge if there is interest and how much time it would take on our already overtasked staff, if there is any time. So I would love to see that.
I'll get that to you tonight or tomorrow morning.
Good.
To everybody.
I have a question, Mr. Manuel, as far as the future work session topics. Previously, you had indicated, and I think, was Councilman Jenkins correct in that next week is traffic calming and a presentation of safety committee?
Yeah, I think we have it tentatively, tentatively scheduled for next week. I think the, I think we had it scheduled for this week, but Chief is in Ocean City at the conference.
Just because I want to be able to put it out there, because of course, that's a concern for everybody. And just knowing what we're doing to try to allay speed and safety concerns is helpful for everyone to get it out there.
If I can, I think initially we had anticipated Ms. Tran from State Highway being here tonight. And her, she ended up with a conflict in her schedule because we were going to be very traffic centric. We were going to be complete streets, traffic calming and the state highway presentation. With Ms. Tran's unfortunate conflict, we're going to have to push her out and I'm in communications with State Highway now on rescheduling that. But yeah, it's the next week, I believe, that Chief Schenner will be making that presentation. And as soon as we confirm that, Councilman Tullinger, I will let you know.
Okay, great. Thank you.
The other topics that we had briefly discussed, and it might have been just in passing, is going back to in-person meetings for all of our commissions and boards and the public hearings. Have we made any progress on that? And what is needed from council in order to either, well, to have a discussion on that, to, to kind of solidify and be all on the same page?
Well, I think it can come up during the Resolution twenty-one dash twenty-three conversation of next week. But as far as other boards, I think we left it up to their discretion. For the planning commission, I think they're just elected to continue to meet remotely. And, sorry. Yeah, and of course, BZA does not meet with as much frequency in a board of, excuse me, the Design Review Board is still, I believe, in a remote status. So I think council could strongly recommend if they had a preference for the other committees. But as far as controlling our own destiny, being the mayor and council, I think we could have that under the twenty-one twenty-three discussion of next week.
And under that discussion as well for in-person, with the option for obviously council, according to twenty-one dash twenty-three. And Craig made me read that inside and out. I think he regretted that very much afterwards. But that is one of the things that council member has the option of, if it's extenuating circumstances like a vacation or whatnot, being hybrid. But one of the things that I really wanted to discuss is the public hearing aspect, if there, if it's a hybrid. Because it was, it's, it's to be a little challenging to have it online and in person. So if that's something that we can discuss with twenty-one twenty-three and perhaps get everyone's input on that. Then maybe next week we can have that discussion with twenty-one twenty-three. Sound good? All right, any other comments on the future work session topics? All right, it brings us to public comment. If anybody would like to speak. I ask that you state your name and whether you're in the incorporated town limits, and if you could limit it to three minutes, it would be appreciated. Would anybody like to speak?
Madam Mayor, there's no one in person signed up to speak.
And there's no one online? All right. With that said, I move to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by saying aye at seven twenty-five.
Aye.
All right, good meeting. Thank you.
Seven twenty-five.
Enjoy, Jim.